Good evening and welcome to the July 9th, 2024 regular board meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Director Bookenegra has our land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kallits tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you, Julie. The next item is to adopt the agenda for tonight.
I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
It's moved in seconded. Director Bookenegra, Director Wetherspoon.
Gronwald.
Gronwald, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have adopted the agenda for tonight. So the first item on our agenda for this meeting is public comments for community members who wish to speak to the board. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes. There's no mechanism whereby a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. No individual may speak more than once per regular meeting even if there's time remaining, and please state your name and district affiliation if any. I'll note as well that we have a public hearing item coming up after public comments, so if you have some comments or input on the sale of the Old Image Elementary School property, I'd ask that you reserve your comments to that point in the agenda. The first person on our list here is Cory Ward, coming in from online. Okay, I'll make sure to get back to that. Okay. Cory Ward, are you here? Cory, can you hear us?
I'm here.
Hi Cory, welcome.
Hi. Sorry, I'm currently driving home for my honeymoon, so my apologies.
Congratulations. We're ready when you are.
Okay, I don't know if you can see me. Okay, thank you, sorry. Alright, so my name is Cory Ward, now Cory Young. I have five children in the school district. My youngest will be class of 2037. I volunteer regularly my kids at school, so I'm around quite a bit. I have children that have IEPs and also who work with academic interventionists. I first want to say welcome to our interim superintendent Christine Maloney. I'm sorry, I cannot meet you tonight in person, and I actually would like to use her three hours to help convey my hope and concerns for the coming year. And I wanted to state that this snapshot, as she comes in, there are so many experiences and interactions that have led to the statements I'm going to share. Relationships. People don't know how much you don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. Unfortunately, the treatment of most of the parents and students have received from the board's actions is one of not caring, of actions and words not aligning, of claiming a desire for collaboration without any action to make it happen. This lack of communication makes it impossible to build a relationship. Also on relationships, there's currently little, if any, trust with the community and its board. The majority of the board has flat out ignored the community members they represent and voted accordingly. Once again, not allowing their words and actions of representing us to match. Rigorous, making sure we have the scaffolding for the students to succeed. This is a tough one, where the majority of the board approved a budget that cut elementary librarians and parrots, and then went on to say how incredible these positions they just approved cutting are. Part of the plan to cover for the work of librarians is to have the academic interventionist at the elementary level do some of the now media specialist work. The board seems totally fine taking my dyslexic child's interventionist time to cover for the loss of librarians, taking their scaffolding because, well, it doesn't affect their children, or taking my children's parrots, preventing them from receiving their full IEP minutes, all at the elementary level, where if that scaffolding fails, what hope do they have for middle school and high school? Which leads right into relevance to our children's futures. So at elementary levels, we have the loss of parrots, IEP minutes not being fulfilled, loss of librarians, and the academic effect that will have. Middle school and high school is where security is nowhere near adequate for the amount of students we have, where there's more security for the district office than any of our middle schools or high schools. Make that make sense. Students are allowed disrespectful behaviors towards their teachers, and teachers are not allowed to speak out. They're expected to just fix it, to keep putting on multiple hats, but yet at the district office, more and more director positions are being created rather than them being told to put on multiple hats. Make that make sense, please. How does any of this lead to positivity for our students' futures? How are we setting them up for the future where unless you are a top succeeding student, your needs and safeties go unmet? The lay of the land. There's not currently trust between the community and the school board or district office. Our teachers' union has currently given the district a vote of no confidence, and on average, we are one of the poorest districts with the most lucrative administrative jobs and pay. Make it make sense, please. I wish Superintendent Maloney luck and truly hope to see her words and actions align as she leads our district. Our district is not a private corporation, and stakeholders deserve accurate information, transparency, and accountability on how our money is being spent in decisions made by the administration. I hope our new superintendent feels the same way and that this year we can start to turn things around by working together and demanding better from those who keep making those same decisions that do not help our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Next person on the list is Catherine Furtick. Catherine, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Furtick. I have three graduates from EPS and a current student. It is crucial to collaborate with this community, your community, so we can advocate more effectively with our legislature for adequate funding for our schools. We are heading into election season again, and while there are many issues within our district's leadership needing attention, we recognize that there's a huge disparity between what our state provides and what our students desperately need, needs which have grown exponentially since 2020. We can be your greatest asset for positive change if you allow us to be. We are eager to see this change come to fruition by working with you and our new superintendent. Welcome. Talk about hitting the ground running. I want to again encourage our leadership to visit the classrooms and see the teaching and learning conditions of our schools. We have so many great staff and students, but the reality of the struggles they face daily needs to be seen and acknowledged. As I sat in on an SIP meeting of several principals discussing their school's year-end progress reports, a board member acknowledged how much gets handed to our school staff and leadership that they are expected to just manage despite how challenging. I appreciated this candor. Collaboration in this aspect also, I believe, would be beneficial to everyone. I would love to see more of a "let's figure out how to manage this together" approach rather than what often appears as "you're on your own, good luck, Godspeed, and by the way, you need to increase your numbers." Speaking of "you're on your own," we would like to ask what progress leadership has made towards mitigating our elementary librarian loss. Teacher planning time is one of the many fallouts from these cuts. We need a plan that preserves academic consistency for students district-wide, not just a school-by-school approach. It is crucial to provide educational equity, which already took a hit with the loss of teacher librarians. We last heard of parrots mentioned as a stopgap, also hints of interventionists and such. These are all support staff. We are already in dangerously short supply of a consistent and adequate number of parrots. How will we potentially hire more if we're already struggling to hire enough now? How are the ones we have now, already spread so thin, going to manage additional responsibilities, not to mention the effect on the children who are struggling to have their IEP and 504 planned minutes fulfilled? We certainly consider our support staff to be vital for student success, and I'm looking forward to hearing more from Dr. Maloney on this in the months to come. There will also be additional challenges with pursuing another levy. There is already a deep distrust and loss of faith in leadership. Collaboration with your community, transparency from start to finish, accurate information about how voters' money is spent, and accountability for your decisions as leadership will be integral in the success of voters placing trust back in you. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next speaker is Camille Lohman. Camille?
Hi, my name is Camille. I'm a mother of a soon-to-be first grader. I'm also a co-founder of a nonprofit that fiercely advocates for K-12 communities in various ways, but began by empowering individual voices of a community to unite together for what's in the best interest of students. In the last several years, there have been resignations and exits by staff and elected officials, some being secret keepers and some because they did not feel comfortable operating within an organization with so many secrets anymore. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments that they have created. This is found several times in RCW Chapter 42 related to the Open Public Meeting Act in 4230010, and also public records requests, 42.50.030. Legislative findings in 2014 concluded that the rights of the citizens to observe the actions of their public officials and to have timely access to public records are the underpinnings of democracy and essential for meaningful citizen participation. The legislature also found that implementing improvements in public service will in turn enhance public trust and result in significant cost savings. Knowledge is power, and when information is withheld or manipulated, or when there is a lack of accessible information, it naturally leads to assumptions being made to fill in all the gaps, some being rumors and some not, but it fosters an environment where confusion, skepticism, fear, and mistrust flourishes, but like a weed, to the point where even when business is conducted properly and is in accordance with all the acts, laws, RCWs, there is still looming suspicion. And even when honest mistakes occur due to human error, there is little room for grace or understanding, which is valid due to the extensive history of secrecy. And it still feels like public comment section of board meetings is just screaming into the void without an echo back, even within three to five business days. Voices that insist on remaining informed are not the enemy. There is significant value in admitting when you don't have all the answers and communicating expectations in order to cut off the food supply to the weed of mistrust so that something healthy, rather than destructive, has a chance to grow. But it takes more than killing a weed for growth to occur. We need soil, water, but we especially need sunshine, the law, to shine light, to ensure accountability and promote transparency, effectively decreasing confusion and fear and growing trust.
Thank you for your comments. Angie Bunda.
Hi, guys. I'm gonna take a breath because I rushed over here. You all know me, except for Dr. Maloney. My name's Angie Bunda. I have two kids in the district. This is my first year in the district, and I'm excited for what we have in store. I felt compelled to talk today just because there's so many different things that need to be brought up, but I didn't really have a plan, so please forgive me for not being very organized. However, I was really impressed when I went to the principal SILP, the meeting, to listen to the principals talk about their school year, talk about what went wrong, what didn't go well, what did go well. It was really encouraging to see the passion and dedication that they have towards our schools and their children. And one thing that was mentioned was the strategic plan, and how we had worked really hard this year on implementing the first two parts of the strategic plan, teaching and learning and school environment, and we had seen benefits from that. And that we are now hoping, as a community, that we can start implementing the second parts of the strategic plan, family and community and employee engagement. And I'm not just saying, "Make it happen, or else I'll yell at you." I have ideas. Yeah. So, as far as ideas with family and community, we're still asking for the same things. We're still hoping for the same things. We would love to see similar things to what Dr. Armstrong implemented at PPS with her PACE program that has different forums for policies, for sped, for all sorts of different things where the board and the community can engage together. You can pass ideas to each other, and there's open communications, as well as having a suggestion that I gave you guys for maybe doing a workshop after your meetings that could include like a town hall, where it's like you're already gathered, you don't have to have another meeting, you don't have to pay for another thing, where you can talk to the community afterwards. And I think people would really appreciate the opportunity, and I think that they would really surprise you, just with the option of being able to speak to someone. As far as employee engagement, I will send you all an email, since I'm running out of time, but I feel that it says, "We will encourage all of our staff to share their opinions, experiences, and expertise to inform any decision that impacts them and their students." When I read this, it hit me like a ton of bricks, that this is literally the opposite of our staff expression policy, 5254, which states, "Anything that an employee says inside or outside of work that could be constructed as negative or have an adverse impact on district operations may result in disciplinary action, including termination." So you're telling people that your pillar foundation that you believe in utmost is to allow them to speak, but this policy says anything that they say that the district decides is negative, they could be fired. We need to talk more about that, and I'm happy to do that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Phil Cronebush. Cronebush?
Yeah, either way. If we're not sure anyways, the family doesn't know. Phil Cronebush, stakeholder here at Orchard Sifton and grandfathered a couple of children here in the district. Basically, I have three items this evening, just real simple. The first is, I realized that we've spoken, the board has talked a lot about, or people have come up and talked about a cell phone policy, a no-cell phone policy, and I think it's a win. I think it's a win-win, simple situation. I know, you know, it might take a little bit of time to implement it, but the policy that some teachers came up, and I believe it was from Evergreen, and spoke of, it was a wonderful policy. It sounded really well. I think you could implement it, do it. It'd be a great win before the start of school, set up for what we really need. We need to help the teachers. If the teacher's asking for that help, let's do it. It's not a money issue. It's just a simple policy change. Talk about it, implement it. We could do this over the summer, and let's go forward and help the kids. Let's take the distractions away. I think everybody wants that, parents and also the teachers. The second item I wanted to talk about was Youth Truth. You just heard a couple statements about it. It's $68,000. We're talking two parrots, or most of a librarian that we just got done laying off. This is not the time. This is inappropriate. This is irresponsible of the board to, I know it's coming up on the consent agenda, to allow that expense. There's a cost benefit here that is just not, that cost benefit, you need to talk about that, before, you need to be transparent to, about the community, about what Youth Truth is all about. A lot of the community and the parents do not understand that there are gender identity questions on the survey. Many of them don't even know their children are being asked this question. Again, here's the transparency piece that so many parents and teachers have been talking about. No transparency about what's going on. The third thing is, again, a budgetary thing, the EV buses. Really, it's too long-range. I mean, this is a wish. I know, it's not our job really to change the climate. Our job and our focus and our priority should be academics. Our OSPI numbers are in the tank. We don't have time to be worried about that. That's a long-range problem. We have to conserve our teachers and our resources and not take focus off the things that are really important, and that's our kids. So I just want you all to consider that, especially the coming up here, the Youth Truth Survey piece, as it comes up, if it does in the consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you for your comments. Okay, that's all the people who are on the list. I'll go ahead and close the public comment section. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the public to comment on the sale of the Old Image Elementary School property. Are there any members of the audience here or online who have a statement about the decision to sell that property? Camille first.
Hello? I just want to confirm and just clarify that the sale of Old Image, the proceeds won't go to the general fund. It would go to the debt service fund. I know that there's a lot of confusion one way or the other, and I think the community would benefit from just an explanation a little bit more about how that goes, so the conversation doesn't lead to like, why aren't we using it to like bring back more teachers or parrots? So, that's all.
Thank you. Phil, do you have a comment?
Was there a consideration to what's going to happen if we need it back? I mean, as the city grows, it's not going to be able to get this land back. I know it's not needed now, but going to the future, I hope there's some consideration. You know, if, you know, I don't know if it's resold, are we going to have first rights to buy it back if we need it, the resource, or maybe I'm confused with what could happen in the future, because if the district's going to grow eventually, we'll maybe need it back. So, I'd like to know what happens.
Okay, thank you. I think both of those questions are easily answered, and Superintendent Maloney, I'd ask that your office reach out to both of those individuals and supply them with an explanation. It's a public hearing. If that's all right. Okay, yeah. We'll open a discussion on the matter now.
Okay. Sorry. Just wanted to make just a few comments to Phil's, or responses to Phil's comments. A portion of the image property actually belongs to SEH. They were lending it to us. That building itself was one of our first that we rebuilt because the infrastructure is not good. They actually have to shovel snow off the roof every year. We actually have other properties around the city that don't have anything on them that we own, so there are other places that we could build, but to be able to make that property to a point that we could actually continue to use it, it would just cost us too much money. And it's always kind of been the plan with SEH on this property. Sorry, that's all I wanted to say on that.
With respect to the disposition of the funds from the sale of the property, my understanding is that it'll be deposited into the capital improvements fund. I'm seeing nods from the facilities and financial experts in the audience here, and from the superintendent, because the law states that those funds can only be used for buildings or other capital improvements. It's a very common question that people ask because of the misunderstanding sometimes that Camille raised, and we want to be clear about that, too, that if we could, I think we'd be a little more creative about it, but it's an unfortunate truth. Any other comments? No further action is required at this time, so I'll close the public hearing for public comment on the sale of Old Image Elementary School, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, the board consent agenda.
I move to approve the board's consent agenda as presented.
Second? It's been moved in seconded. Gronwald and Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Just waiting for the technical pieces. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's consent agenda.
I ask that item F and K be removed from the consent agenda and open to discussion.
Okay, we're removing items F. Oh, it's two-sided. The agreement between Evergreen Public Schools and Center for Effective Philanthropy, and K, the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association, schools approved for membership items, which we'll dispose of after we vote on the remainder of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Perhaps you can make that motion, Gary.
Yeah. I motion that we approve the superintendent consent agenda, excluding those two items at this point.
Seconded.
It's been moved in seconded. Wilson and Wetherspoon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, with respect to item F, the agreement between Evergreen Public Schools and the Center for Effective Philanthropy, discussion and action will require a motion.
I move for approval of item F. Second.
Okay. Moved in seconded to approve item F. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Item F is a three-year contract for the Youth Truth Survey, and in January, we had this past year's Youth Truth Survey, and we had parental and teacher concerns about four optional questions, and one question was asked of elementary school children. The three questions were asked of middle school children. I reviewed those questions at our April board workshop, and I asked who decides whether these optional questions are asked, and our then-superintendent John Boyd said, "The district decides," and I didn't ask further about, you know, who within the district, and I probably should have at that time, but it appears maybe, is this the point in time, since we're approving this? And it has like a cost for the basic survey, and then there's some additional components where I believe these additional questions are added in. So is this the point in time where we discuss those options, or is this, I know it's $68,000 for the entire survey, and I believe those additional questions are, I think, $4,000, and it's an annual for the next three years. So, yeah, my concern about the four questions that were detailed in April that were, as I said, a parent and teacher concern, one concern are children like my youngest daughter, who is on the autism spectrum, and autism children are much more impressionable, and autistic children are particularly vulnerable group when, and at higher risk of social manipulation, and they are also, autistic children are up to six times as likely to experience gender confusion. So I always want to err on the side of caution when exposing children to concepts that may not be age-appropriate based on their development of the child, and I don't think anyone can tell me that for all the children that are asked these questions of, that developmentally, they are appropriate for all of them. And I know Youth Truth Survey has, in varying forms, benefits, and I don't have all the answers, but I do have some concerns.
Thank you. I had to make sure the mic was on. Do you have experience with Superintendent Maloney? Do you have experience with Youth Truth and now that structure, or is that a question that we could answer at a later time?
Yeah, right now, I have not had experience with Youth Truth surveys. I have experience with the Healthy Youth Survey, and the process to go through at the district level, and specific administrators to go through and decide based on, you know, the community and what we need that data for, was we were able to choose, pick and choose which questions we wanted. That was with Healthy Youth Survey. So I can't answer directly with Youth Truth at this point. I can get you information, though.
Okay.
So I just want to add a couple of things. So the additional topics are related to emotional and mental health, school safety, inclusion, et cetera, which we have used the survey as we've built in the strategic plan for the sense of belonging, and using it kind of as a base point so we know where our kids and families are. We're also
We're also, part of the survey is the family survey that goes out to all 39 schools, parents of all 39 schools. So it's a way for us to get the feedback that we're needing, that two-way communication from, from our families as well. And I think that the concern was around the very first question on the survey. It was the question, are you a boy or girl? Or how do, like, I can't remember the exact wording, but how do you identify? And then the rest of the questions, I think, were pretty age appropriate. And really, a lot of it had to do with how they felt about math, too, and learning and academics. And then we added the student belonging questions around emotional and mental health, which I think are really important for us to continue to gauge. Plus, we've had some work with the Youth Truth folks that have actually come in and done some workshops with our kids, and I thought they did an outstanding job presenting to our kids and giving us some additional tools that we can use.
So do we decide at this point whether those questions that were optional and not well received by everybody? Are we approving those questions right now, or is this something that's approved?
It's my understanding we're just approving the contract for the next three years to do it, but I know we can definitely look at the questions that are asked before those surveys are submitted. Because I know Youth Truth worked with our student board reps to make sure they formulated the questions the way they thought were best.
And are parents involved in that decision-making or?
On the questions that are asked? I don't remember. I know that the student board reps were after the fact they were working with Youth Truth.
They were working with Youth Truth on mathematics section.
The part where they came and did some workshops with some of our classrooms.
So that was their involvement. I don't have a sense right now that the student reps were involved in the demographic or, or gender questions. But I agree that this approves the contract. And this is Center for Effective Philanthropy have been pretty responsive to the district's concerns. And I think the conversation can continue with an approved contract. Yeah. I'm especially interested to see if there's a well-understood way to, if, if desired for a parent to opt their students out. I think there's a few percentages of folks who might like to express that. And so, in my opinion. So there's a need for a continued conversation.
And I understand it's, you know, a sensitive topic, and it does have value in its varying forms. And yeah, it's, I don't, again, I don't have all the answers, but if approving this is possibly approving those four questions down the road, I'd probably then choose to abstain at this point.
I don't know. I doubt, I doubt that a vendor like this would not be responsive to the district's direction. We know that Youth Truth is also, it starts in like the third grade and that there are several schools who've piloted their own Youth Truth-ish, age-appropriate questions for K through two. And there certainly, it certainly builds a sense for me that that kind of conversation can continue to happen and continue to include those who have a concern. Yeah.
Based on what I see here, it's really about who's being surveyed, how much the unit price is per those surveys, and what the additional topics are, which are around emotional and mental health, school safety and inclusion. It doesn't say anything about which questions we're going to ask. And so I'm sure that Tilly Meyer and her team can probably work with the folks at Youth Truth. And we can always revisit later on all of the questions and take, take a peek at them.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote on approving the agreement between Evergreen Public Schools and Center for Effective Philanthropy, Youth Truth, read the student and family survey school year, the upcoming school year and the in the subsequent two years, the three years total. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Abstain.
We have four in favor with one abstention, and the motion carries. The next item is item K, resolution number 6949, WIAA, schools approved for membership. Is there a motion?
I move to approve item number K off of the superintendent's consent agenda for the WIAA resolution.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, Gronwald and Boconegra. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I was going to bring up the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association, WIAA, allows biological males to compete against biological girls. They do not require biological male high school athletes to take part in hormone treatments to play and compete in biological girl sports. And I, this creates an unfair and unsafe playing field. Six weeks ago, a biological male won the Washington State WIAA Girls 400 Meter Dash. This agreement with WIAA under the current rules puts Evergreen School District's girls at a physical disadvantage and in potential physical damage, danger, excuse me. I don't know the answer, however, the Kennewick School Board signed a resolution affirming that biological males should not participate in biological female sports. We're running biological women out of women's sports when we allow biological males to compete against them. So again, I don't have all the answers, but I have a concern there, so.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments? So it looks from it looks from the resolution form that they sent that the president and superintendent must sign this resolution form to indicate that the school board has approved the public school districts' membership with WIAA. And as members, these schools will follow the rules and regulations. In the absence of that, what happens to sports?
We don't play in the league. That's what happens. And our kids won't get opportunities to participate.
That seems like something that we really should approve. My, I guess my second question is, I thought it was a matter of law with gender expression and so forth, and as interpreted by OSPI and, and some other state agencies, that we don't have control over that part.
That is correct.
Okay. And based on that, we should approve this?
There are opportunities for school board directors to have voice in WIAA, so that might be something, Gary, that you might want to pursue.
Appreciate that.
Any other comments? Nothing, Jean?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain again.
Okay. Four in favor, one abstention. And the motion carries. That was a long agenda item. Just like 20, 20 things to approve. The next item on the agenda is a superintendent report. Dr. Maloney?
All right, well, thank you. I am thrilled to be here, and it's a short report because I've only been here a very short time, but I've managed to pack in a lot of things in the few days I've been here so far. Yesterday, I went with Veronica, I'm going to, I hope I pronounced the name correctly, Magalinas?
Magayanas.
Pardon?
Magayanas.
Very honest.
Magayanas.
Maginat, I'm
We'll, we'll figure it out.
We will practice, I will get that correct. Director of Multilingual Learners. And so she and I connected in the morning, and I was able to go over and visit summer school for our multi-language learners and walk in the classrooms, visit with staff, see students, talk with them. I was thrilled to see all the happy faces and the learning that was taking place over there. And I did hit it during, I think that's the one I hit during lunchtime. I managed to hit a couple of the schools during lunch and breakfast time. It was great timing for me. And then I was walking down the hallway, and I ran into Matt Bennett. And I talked to him for a little bit and invited myself to come see ESY. And so this morning, I visited, I think we hit every single classroom, teachers, paras, and said hello, talked with students, met Greg the Sloth. That was a little stuffed animal that one of our students had over there. And had a great time. So I really enjoyed getting to know people and learning people's names and chatting with them for a little while. So that was exciting to see. Tomorrow, I'm going to go see Archway. Got some other things lined up as well. So Lori has been great helping me schedule meeting times with lots of different people from around the district, and we're starting to schedule different things. I am looking forward to meeting and learning about everyone and the district, and so that we can move forward together. So it's been busy, and it will continue to be busy, but it's great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maloney. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by our chief financial officer, Jennifer Jacobson, about the 2025 levy. Welcome.
Hi, good evening to the board and special welcome to our new interim superintendent, Dr. Maloney. We're super excited to have you here, so welcome. I am just going to present some levy information today. I know this is a ways down the road, but I thought it's a good idea to just go over some information and facts and, and share that at this point to start us thinking about it. Both our educational programs and operations levy and our tech levy are both set to expire in 2025. So that means we need to go out in 2025 in order to set up collections for 2026. I, in my timeline here, I assumed we would go out in February, but that, of course, is a board decision. You can go out in February, April, August, and November are the four options. Most districts go out in February because it is the least costliest time to go out because we're sharing the ballot with a lot of other government agencies and candidates, and so it lowers our cost of the distribution of the ballots and that. So and another fact is that we can only run the levy twice, so we need to keep that in mind as well. So so starting off just with some basic levy facts, because again, we don't look at this for, you know, every three years. So that it's helpful to just kind of remember these basic facts. So levies are approved for a duration of one to six years. In the past, we've passed our educational programs and operations levies for three-year time period, but recently, both CAMUS and Vancouver passed four-year levies. So because it is so costly to run the levy, that is something to take into account, the length and duration of the levies. The levies require a simple majority, 50%, to pass, unlike running bonds that take the supermajority of 60%. The educational programs and operations levy, that's our, our main levy. It's also called an enrichment levy. It's supposed to supplement kind of what the basic ed funding is for our district. And that's just deposited into our general fund to support operations. In the old days, it was called Maintenance and Operations Levy, MNO, and it's also called a replacement levy, so lots of names. Capital Projects Fund Levy, we have run a tech levy in the past and just primarily focused that levy around getting devices, one-to-ones for all of our students, for our staff. It helps fund our hardware specialists and all kinds of technology. You also have the option to expand that levy to also support our security systems you want to install at the district and also capital renewal projects. So that's something CAMUS has done recently. They expanded their tech levy to also include some other items. And it gives you a little more flexibility. So the board has to determine the duration of these levies and the total amount to be collected per year. So the tax rate is just an estimate. It's based on what we think projected assessed value is going to be. What you're really approving is the total amount to be collected for each year. So just some historical levy information. In 2019, this is before I was here, but we ran two levies. One was a three-year EP and O levy, and we also ran a six-year tech levy at that time. And we passed them both with about 51.6% approval. So that tech levy was over six years. We didn't have to rerun it. It's just coming up expiring next year. In 2022, we needed to replace our three-year EP and O levy that had expired. We ran that in February, and that was failed at a 42.8% rate. We decided to lower the amounts we were asking for, and we came back in April that year and passed with a 54.4% rate. Just to give you an example, the cost of running the February EP and O levy that year was $118,000. When we came back in April, we were the only ones on the ballot. We had to cover $172,000 to run that levy. So it was quite a bit more expensive to run that second levy. So I just have listed here the amounts we've collected or are collecting for these three years. Keep in mind, there is a levy lid just on the EP and O levy part, a maximum collection amount set by the state. So both, there's a maximum per pupil amount for 2024. It's $31.50 per pupil, and Evergreen's at $2,031 currently this year. We also can't collect more than a $2.50 cent per $1,000 assessed value. So we're at $1.59 in the current year. So there's, we're quite far below the maximum level that we can collect. I've included this OSPI report. I like including OSPI reports because anyone can go out, if you want to see the full report and see all the districts in the state, you can go out on the website and find this, this report. It shows, I sorted by just the regional districts to show what our levy per student collection amount is compared to these other districts in our region. So we are the second lowest levy per student amount. I should point out that OSPI used the greater of 1920 or 2122 FTE students because during COVID, we saw such fluctuations in enrollment, and so OSPI started using that instead of just a flat student number. When I did do the calculation with our current student enrollment, it, it bumped it up a little bit because our enrollment has continued to drop. But it's still, we were about $1,900, and so we're still in that second, second place for the lowest. Oh, I should also mention, so we do have a tech levy in addition to our EP and O levy. So do Vancouver, CAMUS, Waschugel, and then Battleground just passed a tech levy as well. So the other school districts only have the EP and O levy and do not have a supplemental tech levy to help with those tech expenses. I wanted to pull out CAMUS and VPS. These are our two neighbors. We're often used with comparisons with CAMUS and VPS. And show both the EP and O levy per student and then that capital levy and where we fall. And you can see over these three years, Evergreen is significantly lower than both CAMUS and VPS in our collections per student. Our capital levy was a little bit higher than Vancouver's, but our EP and O levy continues to be significantly lower than what they're currently collecting. Am I going too fast or? Okay.
You're fine.
So here is historical levy information. You can see how our assessed value has really gone through the roof in the last few years. We were at $19 billion in our region in 2020, and we currently are at $28.5 billion in this region. So you can see the percent increase in our assessed value here. We had 17.5%, 6.7%, some huge numbers. And so we kind of have to forecast where that's going to be in the future. Right now, financial advisors are using 4%. I did get some preliminary information for 2025, and I think it's likely going to be even lower than that. So that is something as we're working through the process, we can kind of keep in mind. So you can see the total amount of bond collections and then the tech levy and EP and O levy amounts we've collected over the last few years, and those are the amounts we will set. Our bond rate is, is going down, and so part of our strategy is whether we want to keep consistent rates, keep our total tax rate at a certain amount, how we want to structure this. So back in 2022, we were at 379. We promised the voters it would stay under 379, and we have kept it at 357 for the last three years in a row, so. So some considerations as we're moving forward. So some considerations as we're moving forward, whether we want to maintain running two separate levies, the EPNO levy and the tech capital projects fund levy, or whether we want to combine it into just one levy. If we think we have a better shot at passing one levy versus two, there's all of those considerations to take into account. One thing to think about, though, is if we were to combine those two, we would start seeing that levy lid. We would start climbing up to it, and that might be a limiting factor in our total collections. We also have more flexibility with that capital projects fund levy. As our bond projects are finishing up, it would be helpful to have some capital renewal, you know, supported by having this additional capital projects fund levy. And then there's always some risk of running the two levies versus one. And so I have some information I can share at a later date when we're in a board work session that DA Davidson put together about what the percentages are if you're running, you know, one levy versus two, if it helps to run them together, which it does. I think if you ran a capital projects levy on its own right now, it has an 82% chance of passing, but if you run it with any EPNO levy, it's, I think, 89% chance of passing. So it does appear to be helpful to run the two together. Another consideration is determining the duration of the levy. If you want to continue with the three-year levy, if we want to do the tech levy at six years like we have in the past, that's another consideration. And then, of course, the amounts of the levy. So lastly, the timeline. So now I'm just sharing information so that you can start thinking about this. In August or September, we'll have a workshop so we can kind of discuss more options and different amounts and types of levies. And then in October, November, we'll need to pass a levy resolution to approve the amount we'd like to collect. And in November, I will submit a pre-ballot approval form to OSPI, and then our filing deadline with the county is December 13. And that is all for the February 11 election day. So that's kind of working backwards from that day. And that's really all I had to share. So do you have any questions, or? It's a lot of information.
Well, I know February of 2022, the levy failed by a little over 3,600 votes, and then April of 2022, it passed by over 2,700 votes. So there's a 6,400 vote almost swing there. And realizing, you know, with the bitter teacher's strike and, you know, the recent voter no confidence from the teachers' union, it's going to make it challenging this time around for those reasons. And added on to that, I didn't think of this back last in March when we were going through the budget, but, you know, eliminating all the elementary librarians, that's going to be another hard hurdle, I think, for getting. And I know we were, back then, Rob, you said we were at step N in March on the budget process, and at this point, I'm sure we're probably step X, probably, because the first reading's next, probably our next board meeting.
Yep. The board is due to the ESD 112 tomorrow, and then we'll go through that with them. Sometimes we have revisions to make. It'll be publicly available the next week, and then at the next board meeting, I'll present.
Yeah, the first reading and then second reading, the last board meeting in August. So I don't know if there's any way to adjust anything with the budget there for elementary librarians, but I know, I'm afraid it could be a stumbling point, just in reality.
It's five weeks away. The first reading is the August 13 meeting. So there's a lot of time. Julie, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple things about the levy. And to Gary's point about the February failure to the April, I don't think we did a lot of work and communication around that first one, where we should have been out telling our story, talking to our community about the importance of the levy. And I think that we have learned from that experience that we need to have the information early. That's why Jennifer's presenting to us tonight, so we can start thinking about what we need to do. I also think that, you know, as we consider our levy proposals and the timelines and do we combine them, we have to think about, and I think this board has always made a priority, to try to keep the tax levy rate down. And I think that's important to us. And I think we knew that coming into the year where the bond rate went lower, that we would be in a good place, and so we could show our citizens that we're being responsible and not trying to raise taxes. So we have a lot of education to do and a lot of communicating, and I think it's really important that we're starting now and that we're getting the information so we can start thinking about how we want to put this on the ballot when we decide to do it, and then how we move forward in our efforts from there.
Thank you. A lot of questions, and this goes back to years and years before I was on the board, have to do with, people would ask me, what do you do with the money? And the answer, it's deposited into the general fund, is not always terribly satisfactory, but I did want to make sure and confirm with you that EPNO levy dollars are deposited into the local sub-fund, and that the reporting can show the spending out of the local sub-fund as disaggregated from the spending out of the rest of the general fund.
That's correct. They changed that accounting about four years ago.
Yeah, it came with the McCleary fix or the legislation before that, right? I think it'll be important to talk about, now that we have four years of data about how the money was spent, it'll be important to talk about that in those terms, and I'm certainly willing to help with the data stuff.
And we have a plan put in place that identifies exactly how the levy funds are spent out. So that's a requirement by OSPI now. So that's audited every year, and they make sure we follow it.
Excellent.
I would definitely get that communicated to the public, because I know on the budget survey, there were a number of comments stating about, you know, we worked to pass the levy, and the dollars that were supposed to go to, things are being cut from those levy dollars. So, and I think there were a few comments like that actually on the superintendent search survey. So I think the community needs to be better communicated with as far as, you know, where these levy dollars are going, and here's where these levy dollars in the past, where they were going to go, and here's where they went. And because there maybe is some miscommunication there, maybe, I don't know. Just going from what people answer in the surveys.
It's around 13.5% of the total budget, at least the 2025 projections. Contradict me if I'm wrong about that, but it's a big deal.
If you combine tech levy and...
Oh, it's 407.8, over $400 million. It's a big deal, and the loss of that source of funding is going to make the last three years of budget cuts look easy. So there's a lot of talking to do and a lot of persuading, a lot of information sharing. Thank you for your presentation. The next three items are information items for the board. The first one is the financial statement for May 2024. Are there any comments or questions from the board about this item?
I had asked questions, and Jennifer answered them.
Okay. Hearing no comments. The second item is the, oh, no action is required on information item A. The second item is the Clean Building Performance Standard Qualified Assistant and Investment Grade Audit Phase 1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. No further action is required. The third one is the School Bus Fleet Electrification Plan. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I've got it. Wrote down, jotted down a few things. You know, it says in there that it's in line with the state's decarbonization goals. This has already been approved, is that my understanding? Because I didn't know if we were approving this. It's a $134,000 feasibility study for, I think it was Senate Bill 5431, that's under consideration, that effective, if it passes, which we don't know if it will or not, but it would, starting in 2035, so over 10 years from now, we would, every bus that we purchase would have to be electronic EV. And I'll let you go from here, Nicole.
And Rob, if you have anything?
Welcome, Nicole. No, I just wanted to say that my information was that the board approved the spending last August on the August 18 meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Maybe you could talk a little bit more about, we had a discussion, you and I, and talked about it, but there was a law that did pass regarding electrification of the fleet. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, for sure. So the second substitute House Bill 1368 did pass. That went into effect June 6, 2024. The school district did make comment during legislative session about that particular bill. There were portions of it that were not well-defined. And the school district is absolutely interested in being an environmental steward, but it has to make sense. One of the biggest portions of that particular bill was that it did not consider the total cost of ownership. So while it may be simple to change out an existing school bus for an electric school bus at its regular depreciation schedule, what's not being considered is the total cost of the infrastructure. We have to pay for those stations. Well, when you dive into that, you're looking at, what's the electrical load existing at transportation? Do we have enough? We have almost 300 school buses in our fleet. That's just our school buses. We also have a white fleet to consider. And then eventually, I mean, this will expand potentially, right, in the state to our maintenance vehicles, our mowers. I mean, it can go well beyond that. So we really needed to get an idea of, what is that total cost of ownership? How do we train our maintenance, our mechanics to actually maintain these school buses? So that House Bill was revised to basically pare it down and investigate that total cost of ownership. They put that task on OSPI in coordination with the Department of Ecology, and so I believe, per that House Bill, I believe, starting or by November, they should be surveying school districts around the state to get an idea of the impact, the total cost of ownership, the current, so current emissions, zero emission vehicles that school districts have, if they're going to be seeking grant funding, how much are they looking at? Are they looking at it just for infrastructure, infrastructure and the buses, et cetera? And then looking at the depreciation schedules, and if they have anything in existence in their fleets that was manufactured prior to 2007, why do they still have it? And then they're supposed to then take that, wrap that up pretty little bow, and send that back to the legislature so they understand then the funding piece. In the meantime, though, because, so there was that bill, and then there was the Senate Bill 5431, which is kind of just sitting right now.
Yes.
Yeah. So, because, once again, we need to understand, how much is this going to actually be for school districts? There are currently grant funds through the state and federal grant funds as well for school districts. Obviously, the federal stuff is every school district in the United States of America. And of course, you can utilize, I believe you can utilize some of the state funds as matching for that, and there's ways to make it happen. But realistically, at this time, our school district doesn't even understand what it would take to even get to the point to outfit 300 school buses as zero emission vehicles. So all of that to say, this particular study is just that starting point. In addition to that, working very closely with Yvonne and Lyndle in transportation, there was a lot of discomfort with even taking a step forward to try it out. We have neighboring school districts that have small portions, like six school buses, et cetera. Folks are starting out small, A, because it's very expensive, and B, the technology, as we know, it's changing rapidly. Now I feel there have been, the EPA is doing a lot of webinars and stuff, and, I mean, they are feeling a lot more confident about pushing stuff out to school districts and helping them understand how this will work. This particular study will look at implementing EV buses, two small buses and two large buses for us, so we can get an idea of what's that like. Is it sustainable for us, given our routes, given athletics, given all kinds of other things we need to consider? The cold weather, that needs to be considered as well. And then it will then create a whole plan, basically a long-term plan that will tell us, by this point, we could do, within 10 years, we could outfit another 100, given the existing electrical load we have. But if we want to go beyond that, we need to invest in a larger transformer at transportation. We then take that information to share that with Clark PUD, and they will then get an understanding, not just our district, but they really need to know about all the districts in Clark County, how much is it going to actually take on the grid to make this happen? Are there larger-term investments that they need to do to make sure that there's enough electrical load to make this occur? So this plan, this study, will help support that, but it's not a deep dive into it because we want to be confident before we step forward in kind of joining in on this journey with other school districts, because it's a big step.
Yeah. And, you know, even logistics, you know, right now, it takes maybe 10 minutes to fill the school bus up, and it's going to take hours possibly, and you'd have to have all those, you know, if you get a fleet of 300.
For sure. And that's the beauty of kind of entering in now. So I'll go to my previous school district, because I was there when we did, when we did the electric buses there, and we didn't put in the right charging stations. We would be looking at Level 2s, and those bad boys will charge up in like 10 minutes. So, I mean, so that's what I mean, and that's a consideration, right? I mean, how many, and that's what this study will help with. How many school buses need to be charged up in the 10 minutes versus, you know what, we can still, these buses, we use them for maybe shorter-term trips. We don't use them that often. Maybe it's for field trips. Whatever the case may be, they can go on a charger where it does take a longer period of time to charge.
So, this bill, 1368, it's passed, and the backup in that attachment talked about the 5431, and it hadn't passed. It was under consideration.
Right.
But there is, I don't think it mentioned 1368, but 1368 did pass?
It did pass, and that passed the House, March 5, passed the Senate, March 1, approved March 28, signed March, or filed and signed by the governor March 29, and went into effect June 6. The reason, so, because the Senate bill is more of the crux of, after this happens with OSPI, this is how it's going to go. Once they know that total cost of ownership, and they develop basically the funding for that, because that's really what needs to happen, because we're not the only school district vying for the monies, right?
It's not another unfunded state mandate on education.
Precisely why we testified, because we have, between this and the Clean Building Performance Standard, you're talking about compliance, things that are, once again, we want to be good stewards of the environment. What is the cost of that? Because if we get, like you said, if we have unfunded mandates, it's very difficult on school districts. And I mean, we're a larger school district. I mean, the rural, the rural school districts, they struggle with this. And so it's, and trust me, I talk with my facility counterparts all around the state, and we're all like, how do we make this happen? How do we, we want to do this, but where's that money coming from?
And then the life of the batteries, and then what to do with these giant batteries when they're...
100%?
Yeah. The EV, or the, you know, ecological, you know, how to dispose of them is a question, too.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a full life cycle, not just for that particular industry, but I mean, when you think about it for school districts, too. That's, like I said, that total cost of ownership, that whole study, that getting that information is going to be vital for us as we proceed.
1368, is that similar, requiring us to, as of 2035, to all purchase? No, it doesn't have anything?
Not yet. Once they, once they do their study, then I think they will take the crux Once they, once they do their study, then I think they will take the crux of that Senate bill and really expand and create those new deadlines for school districts. And it will follow, I mean, logically, it's going to follow the regular depreciation of the school buses that's already in existence, but it's just a matter of developing that schedule and seeing what will actually work and be sustainable for school districts long-term.
Yeah, and for electrical grids.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
You're so welcome. Any other questions? Fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. No action is required on this item. And that's the third of the three information items. The next item on the agenda is board comments, comments by the school board. Who would like to start?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Once again, Superintendent Maloney, welcome. It's good to have you here, and, and I'm glad to have someone in the seat. Essentially, it's not possible to effectively lead without our superintendent, and I'm hoping that you're having a good onboarding experience, and just want you to know that if you need anything from me, please just reach out.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, welcome, Christine. And, yeah, the, back in May, I had mentioned it, and actually Jackie was the first one to bring it up about looking at a possible cell phone policy. After we got that book from Carrie McGary and The Anxious Generation, and I brought it up in June, so is there any possibility of having that be on maybe the next board meeting, have a discussion on?
Well, we have some retreat dates coming up. You should get your availability on the days and weekends or evenings so that we can schedule those workshops in August. And I agree, we should have, begin having a conversation about that.
I would agree, I would agree as well about having the conversations. I would maybe, because I'm having a conversation about the fact that we want it is, we all kind of know we need it, but maybe when we do discuss it, maybe having some content to that, checking with other school districts to see what maybe they're doing so that we have some depth to the conversation.
I know Evergreen presented last month.
Evergreen High School?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had done an over ninety percent vote and had submitted it earlier that day to admin, so I don't know where that's at or.
My understanding, when we had the SIP with Evergreen, because Evergreen's in my student, school improvement plan presentations, is that they did not have full buy-in, and they were worried that if not all of the teachers do it, that the kids will get to that point where they're like, oh, we don't really care what some of them are doing. So it's definitely something we need to discuss and look, because I don't want it to be just another rule that's handed down that is just ignored and frustrates people. I'd like to be more intentional with it.
Yeah.
I think it's a much larger topic, too. I, I, I'm interested in having the conversation as well, but I think that there's a lot of things that go into it. I think that you need to, there was a comment earlier about families want it. Well, I'm not sure all families want it. I, I don't know that that's necessarily true. I think families like having their student, having access to their phone during the day as well. So I think there's a lot of questions that we need to answer. I also think that there's, you know, we see and hear about all of these classrooms that have storage cases, and you walk in and you put your phone, and then I'm thinking, well, we have a lot of classrooms, so I don't know what the expense would be like on that. So there's a lot of things to consider. So I don't know, it's something that, I definitely think we need to have a conversation about it and, and start that dialogue, but I don't know if it's something that we can decide this summer. I don't know if that's even possible.
Definitely one for the workshop.
And I just wanted to mention, too, Initiative 2081, the Parents' Rights, or the Parents' Bill of Rights, it received four hundred and fifty-five thousand signatures. I know I submitted over two hundred myself, and it was signed into law in March, and it received bipartisan support, passing in the House of Representatives by a vote of eighty-two to fifteen, and passing in the state senate unanimously, forty-nine to nothing. And on June fifth, Chris Reitdahl, our Superintendent of Public Instruction, instructed school districts not to change policies affected by the new law. Doesn't seem to be at this time supporting it. So if you're a parent and you care about parental rights, you can email him. Thank you.
Did you happen to hear why or just as?
I know there was a injunction, but it had been denied. There was an injunction at the time.
From OSPI?
No, some groups.
Okay.
Yeah.
My sense of that was that, that most of the legislature, most of the House and all of the Senate were satisfied that it wouldn't create a conflict with other law. Many of the things listed in the Parents' Bill of Rights Initiative were already rights. But I think a lot of school districts in the state itself had problems with the enumeration and explanation of those things, because each of those rights were defined and scattered throughout case law and so forth. I never anticipated that it would change how we should interact with parents when they have concerns, but, and so I don't anticipate a, you know, a big, that it'll become a big deal. If it does, we'll talk about it. Are there any other comments? Hearing none? We'll call this meeting to recess and then reconvene for a board workshop after the board signs some papers. With that, we're in recess.